Pierre, Pierre, Pierre. Jason and Juanier.
Oh, it's Sandy, it's supposed to be Jason.
Jason.
Sandy, it's Jason.
Jason, Benesius.
Okay, well, we're gonna start because we're saying we started more. This is a work session of the mayor council notice was given as follows. Notice was filed Johnny Ford, two thousand twenty-four with the record in the work star ledger, holding official newspapers of the borough. Notice was posted on the building board at the Borough Hall and at the Borough website. Copy is preserved in the clerk's office, potential reasons and a bold sentence brought to you by Council Juanier.
Number five, United States of America, this is a republic, all is strength, one nation, one God, inclusive law, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Go pop please.
Mayor?
Here.
Council Jane, she's sick, so I don't think she can make it tonight. Council Kim? Council? Kim?
Yes.
Council Lee?
Yes.
Council Min?
Here.
Council Petrie, he's not in here yet, so we can wait. Council Juanier?
Here.
Borough Tony?
Yes.
Borough, Borough doing it later?
Here. Great, we have total of four councils present. Thank you very much for your participation. Can we go forward with the adoption of minutes?
Okay, adoption of minutes, special meeting of the mayor council, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Work session of the mayor council, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Regular meeting of the mayor council, September twenty-third and two thousand twenty-four.
Great, the minutes are there. Please, council members, take a look at the minutes and we will, we will vote on it on next Monday. Let's go with the ordinance introduction.
Okay, introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-four, this is sixteen, bond ordinance for authorization for various capital improvement.
Any questions about bond ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen? Again, no questions for bond ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen? Okay, let's move forward.
Second reading public hearing ordinance, two thousand twenty-four, this is fifteen, creating ordinance, chapter one sixty-nine, entitled, lead to K D inspection.
Yes, this is our second meeting for creating ordinance for land-based paint inspection. We reviewed it. Any further questions before we vote next week, Monday? Again, any questions concerning the second meeting of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, land-based paint inspection? All right, let's move forward.
Okay, discussion item for council agenda tonight, resolution, two thousand twenty-four dash two forty-six, rule two thousand twenty-four, there's two sixty-four.
Guys, take your time. Review, uh, council agenda from two four six all the way to two six four.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
Or page?
Resolution please.
The claims.
Claims. So, resolution two four six.
The claims.
Four six.
Right. Uh, it says Bergen County Utilities.
What page please?
It's first page.
Thank you.
In the middle, somewhere a little more.
Bergen County?
Bergen County.
Utilities.
It's a five hundred ninety, oh, thousand dollars, or the sixty-one?
Whoa.
What's this? It says B C U A, that's like, I guess Bergen County.
Roy, Larry.
The suburban county utility, they'll pay four times a year, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's what we pay to the county to treat our work.
Sewer.
Sewer?
Sewer, water. So, we spend about two point four million a year.
It's in the budget to pay.
I guess that's not part of my taxes. Anything else we could find? IPS is, uh, what is it there for?
Hocke.
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 PA, did you, uh, did you conclude with the, uh, the cards, gas cards? Uh, what was the status on that?
They, uh, I talked to the officer in charge, Captain Turner, the other day, he said they're going to be able to handle that.
Excellent. Thank you. If you could tell the council members, probably, thank you. This, uh, question, Roy, um, page eight, is number eight. It says two hundred fifty-seven thousand for Bergen County Park for res, uh, for res for payment of debt as per budget and Roy reserve. What's that?
The two hundred fifty-seven thousand, that is going to be a check to current fund, which is the reserve for debt. It's in the budget. That's the money that we're about to turn over from general capital to the current fund, uh, as per the budget, which ultimately reduces the taxes on the homeowner.
Thanks. How often do we do this? How often do we do this?
Yearly.
Yearly, just once a year?
Towards the end of the year, we do it.
Page six, uh, munidex. Okay, it actually listed twice. Is that? Is that, I mean, it's P O number same, check number same, but it listed twice. Oh, I see. You take it out twice.
In page what, six?
Page six.
Munidex. How much is it? So, munidex, okay.
Four thousand seven hundred eighty-five, then you pay again, then you, I guess you, uh.
So, pretty much it's a zero.
Yeah.
Pretty much it's a zero.
Pulling, I don't want to guess.
Yep.
Uh, page number five. Rental of parking lots in the amount of forty-one hundred forty-nine dollars, uh, and two change. Which, which lot is this?
We're pulling, we're pulling the bills list. It's gonna be one of the lots that we haven't leased agreed with. We're gonna pull it now.
Okay.
Right, pull lots, is it page five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the middle here.
Roy.
Yeah.
IPS bill, how often do we pay? Is that quarterly or?
Which one is the IPS?
Uh, the beginning parking lot.
The meters, usually every other month.
Every other month.
Other month. Whenever we get the invoice.
This might be, uh.
It's contractual. You have a contract, please.
Concerning, uh, council, councilman's, uh, inquiry, the rent or parking, I mean, we'll, we'll pull it up, but I think it's the extra parking lot, or is that the, the borough?
We have a lease that's attached to the purchase here, so we can tell you exactly what it is.
Six oh two two, I think it's the Onion Cellar?
Yeah.
Because that's the one we, we talked about.
That's the one we were at.
Yeah, okay.
We gotta renew it, yeah. We've just been using it with the same rate continuously, month to month.
They don't want to change it, they just need to change the, and we'll.
Because the landlord changed.
And they want to know if you want to, you know, certain. Where are you? It's down, it's up, broad, to the right here, if you're, you're backed to the front of the, the Borough Hall and take a right and it's on the across the street from the Onion Cellar. Mike, uh, go.
It's the little, it's the little.
Yes.
It's the little, it's the little. And you went to off of Broad Avenue, back up and it's across the, it's called, it's back there, you're, you're probably paying more.
Oh, 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 you talking about the big fucking lot? I'm so sorry. Anybody know the exact address?
That's behind the, uh, the gas station.
They said, that's a little, little.
No, it's not south. It's the Onion Cellar.
Yes, they said.
Onion Cellar.
Onion Cellar.
Onion Cellar. Block six oh two, I think it's two.
Huh?
I think, I think it's block six oh two two.
It's, uh, the address.
Yeah, the Onion Cellar.
Onion Cellar. Never heard of it.
That's what they, because the vegetable, meth, produce guy, he's called Onion Cellar.
Hey, it was one five dot, because P O, maybe, had, had the address. Hey, P O's?
Uh, page five, block two line.
Guys, shh.
K A B Computer Services, and then if you look at description, it says yearly subscription. What are, what are these?
Right. Actually, maybe we should call the municipal, you know, S P, you have these, this. Who has question again?
Okay, on page five, option two line, it says K A B Computer Services. If you look at the description, it says a yearly subscription. So, what are these subscriptions for?
Yearly subscription, sorry. It means one.
Part of K A B.
K A B. Probably the, uh, or, or the, uh, the, the, the P O, but maybe the subscription that they're actually, like, maybe that's still put the Microsoft or, um, the firewall.
We're pulling that too, John.
Yeah, I'm guessing, but.
I can guess what it's for, but I don't want to guess on tape.
Usually, usually those programs run by the year.
It is. It is. It's, it's the Microsoft, but I want to pull it to show for you.
Or the, uh, the.
Email.
Maybe.
Oh, two hundred fifty-five, that's a email.
All right. Let's go with the top of the page. The first one that we pulled out is on page. Page five. Uh, token, uh, only just before, in Joe K A K Joseph, this is the red code of apartment. When do you guys come to the podium? Can one of the finest department come to the podium and explain since you pulled out the, the records? Thank you, Roy.
Okay, so on the bills list, you'll see a nine thousand seven, uh, five seventy-one forty.
I'm so sorry. Can we start from the beginning? I think we all started with page five first. All right, and we have to go down to in Joe K A K Joseph, rental parking lots, four thousand one hundred forty-nine.
So, that is called the Onion Cellar. That's a, uh, a lease that you've had in place for decades.
Good. Do you know the exact address?
It's six oh two two, uh, Broad Avenue.
Still two two.
Block and lot.
Wow, wow. Thank you for the address verification, thank you. All right, please continue. We have the same page at the bottom, K A B Computer Service.
That's the yearly subscription, the eighteen hundreds for the server, the two fifty-five is for the, uh, email address. Those are licenses.
The server.
Yes. The li, their licenses. One is for the server and one is for the email.
Server for our documents, correct?
Correct. You have a contract with K A B to do this work as well.
Okay, the next one is page six, munidex. There's a two positive and two negative, which equals.
Right, so what happened was we adjusted the bond. I didn't feel comfortable charging the bond, so we went to the current fund. The money was in there. Uh, it's the opposite, we're charging the bond, not current fund, uh, for nine thousand five seventy-one. And the reason you'll see a plus and a minus is because we took it from the current fund, we took it out, you'll see the zeros out, and then we paid it out of capital fund, oh, four.
Okay, okay. John, you get?
Say it, everybody.
Yep. And the next one is.
Rental.
Of page eight, we, we just received, uh, we just been explained that the two hundred fifty-seven is for the general capital, uh, for to clean our water, right?
That's the B C U A toward that?
Yep, yep, yep. I think that's it.
No, one more. Page six, uh, which is going to go back to the, the munidex part?
Yes.
Uh, right over that munidex, right? There's an amount of, uh, three thousand seven hundred fifty of the rental parking lots again.
That's Lismar, it's another parking lot.
Where, where is it?
Lismar Reality?
You have Lismar Reality, that's a parking lot also.
Okay, behind the Exxon station. The meters behind the Exxon station.
And it says, that's a parking lot, it's under the appropriation.
Okay. Oh, so, uh, Mike, was the address for? The Onion Cellar is two twenty dash two twenty-eight Broad Avenue. It's, and it's six oh two. Twenty? Yeah, it's twenty to two twenty-eight, it's block six oh two, twenty-two, I'm sorry. Broad Avenue. Six oh two, two two. Six oh two, two two. Two two is block lot. Lot, block lot.
Twenty.
Two twenty, two twenty.
Two twenty, two twenty-eight Broad Avenue, the block lot is six two. Six oh two, lot twenty-two. Lot twenty-two. Any more questions? I say again, any more questions before we move on? All right, let's move away from claims. Any other, uh, questions, please, for two four seven all the way down to two six four?
What is two fifty-two about? Resolution?
Yes, uh, councillor, the performers settlement for forty-one point five.
Yeah, they, they, if you, if you take a look at the, uh, settlement agreement, it's self-explanatory. I can't go into more detail because it's a potential litigation at this point.
What did he?
It's not litigation, it's potential litigation. But if you read the settlement agreement, which is attached to the resolution, it's self-explanatory.
Okay, so that's not, uh, uh, going in, just a potential settlement of, uh, of, of litigation, right?
Well, it's a potential lawsuit. This is a settlement that we proposed to the governing body so we could settle it. Read, please read the contract. If you have any questions, please contact, uh, councillor Scruball and he'll, he'll answer your problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two, two, two sixty-three, hiring full-time DPW employee.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a, uh, advertisement?
Um, it's okay, this is when, uh, Jason, council, council Kim? Council Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you're not the, uh, the DPW committee chair, but you are part of that, you're, you're, you're one of the council members supporting Stephanie Jang. Stephanie Jang unfortunately cannot make it because she was sick. She is sick right now, but, um, what I've been told from, from the B A and from Kenny Bruno was that Kenny, uh, Kenny Bruno proposed to, allegedly was supposed to propose what he wants in the DPW because they're, 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 they're lacking staff, they're, they're on the mend. And, uh, which we call it, um, he should have talked, uh, spoken with the, uh, Stephanie Jang about his recommendations. His recommendation was because we're in a stage where we have to clean, we have homework because of fall cleanup and he needs, he needs employees immediately. So, he recommended that the part-time, uh, staff, uh, staff there to be, uh, to be hired as a full-time. And, uh, he is request, he's requesting that, you know, we open, uh, we open, uh, job opportunity, uh, job advertisements for the two part-time, uh, positions that we need. For the DPW, um, we do have spaces, but there are other, uh, management issues there, which I cannot, uh, personnel here. But it, I would recommend that you speak with Stephanie and also Kenny, uh, that is a story. Go ahead, councilman.
So, it was recommended by the superintendent of DPW?
It was recommended to CP, uh, DPW, and I didn't get reply from the committee chair, Stephanie Jang. Ray, her responded by saying, I'm okay with that, I support that, and here we are right now.
So, he is currently part-time.
Well, she didn't, uh, share any information about this to me, so it's totally new.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I don't think I can recommend it.
No, absolutely. I, I don't want, this is a work session, we're not gonna vote on anything right now, but I appreciate if you could talk to Stephanie Jang. I did send her emails and try to call her. But, uh, she needs to, uh, perform her duties and give us a recommendation because she is the chair and she has to work on that. It has to be brought up to the governing body and, and we should all decide with the rest of the governing body. That's the procedure.
Okay.
Okay, so you can, make sure, make sure that she acknowledges the requests of the DPW superintendent and, and see if she agrees or not. She has to superpose what she would like to recommend to the rest of the governing body.
Okay, so I will, before the next meeting, I will call her up and find out if she is recommending the, uh, I'm moving the recommendation from the, uh, Kenny.
Yes, please discuss with her if this is okay with her or if she has separate, uh, you know, recommendations. You know, we have to, we have to listen to the, we have to first listen to the, uh, committee members and the B A approve that as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I will check, uh, I will check upon her, uh, what is the status and, uh, what is our recommendation.
Thank you.
And get back to you by next meeting.
Thank you, thank you. And you could, you could just even email me or, 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 you know, just so I can give update with anybody else. Um, councilman, do you have a question?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll address, uh, once, once he finds out, once, uh, councilman Kim finds out what's going on, I'll, I'll talk to him.
All right, good. Ray, would you communicate and also send, uh, Stephanie an email, letting you know that she has to give us a recommendation. Yes. She is the committee chair there. You can't just, you know. Or without her recommendation.
So, he's, he's currently a part-time employee at DPW, right?
Yes, yes.
And he's actually in the process of.
Getting a C D L.
C D L?
Well, I don't know. All, all I know is just written, re, uh, all I know is what my understanding is, I think it's written that, is that Sean was supposed to get a C D L, then become a full-time. I remember that. And, and, um, I don't know if that's, you know, it's conditional writing. But, uh, we are lacking C D L, uh, drivers. We need at least one immediately, uh, and, and more to follow later, but.
What about the other two, uh, full-time that's being hired together? They were all for, uh, C D L two.
They're going for it, yes.
All of them, but it only needs one?
No, no, he, he needs more later, but right now he needs one.
Right now he needs one immediately.
And I guess, I guess Sean is, is the one who's very proactive about it. Um, I do want to make sure that the superintendent, um, take responsibility of making sure that if Sean becomes a full-time, he has to get the C D L ASAP, probably. Um, but let me that, let's pause this for now, get some information from Stephanie Jang, and then, you know, councilman can come back. Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Any more questions about the resolutions? All right, ask one more.
Resolution fifteen, uh, is about, how much is the new amount?
Could you repeat one more time, council, council Kim?
What is the resolution sixteen?
Resolution two sixty-three.
Sixteen, yeah.
Two sixty.
And how much did you have to talk about?
Two sixty?
Sixteen.
There is no sixteen? Oh, ordinance, ordinance.
The ordinance.
Ordinance, we're talking about the ordinance. The ordinance, uh, bottom amount, uh, if you have it, um, is the amount, uh.
It's one point two million dollars.
Say that again?
It's one point two million dollars.
One point two million, one point two four million dollars.
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter, close to it. And this is all the, uh, improvements that we need for the roads and whatnot. There are, there are roads that, uh, does not apply for grants, for example, dead-end roads that never apply. So, we need to, uh, periodically update, uh, and, you know, repave and, 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 you know, update the, uh, roads that are not, you know, scheduled because it wasn't part of rent. And there are, there are roads that needs to be immediately fixed, for example, uh, Broad Avenue, there's some sewage issues that has to be addressed as well. All that stuff is provided by the.
So, it's a one point two million, you said?
One point two four.
One point two four.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Any more questions?
I have a question regarding regulation two sixty and sixty-one, so two sixty, what's the total amount of money we are signing up for? It says ninety-five cents per foot.
Where are the, the service, share service contract, TV inspection, correct?
Yes.
And where is that eighty cents? I remember seeing it here somewhere.
First, uh, page of share service agreement, TV inspection.
Yeah, per foot.
Per, per foot, so, so.
Ninety-five cents per foot, twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
And ninety-eight cents per foot, twenty twenty-six.
So, what's the total?
Minimum five hundred.
Nobody knows the answer? I think we did this share services agreement before, correct?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Um, B A, would you do me a favor, find, find, uh, reference of the two years ago agreement for share services? And also, we can try to find out with the Northwest C T O D guys, how much general ballpark figure will, to, will cost us for the amount of service?
A lot of it's gonna depend on how much we use them for, but, uh, I will, I will get the previous.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I'll put that note here. Okay.
Two sixty-four, it says authorization.
Wait, hold on a second, you didn't do two sixty-one either.
It's the same thing.
Same thing?
It's a different price for different, for the same.
So, it's the same question. Okay, please continue.
Okay, two sixty-four, it says authorization of advertising for hiring part-time DPW labor.
Yes.
So.
This is part, actually, the one we just talked about with John Min and Jason, we're talking about the same thing. Resolution two six three and two six four are both part of DPW. What the superintendent recommend to now, and it's not decided, is that he is recommending that Sean Kim, the part-time, uh, employee, become full-time because he needs it, eh, properly. Because he needs, like, it's fall season, he, he's, he's really lack of manpower. And the optimization that we're having part, for part-time DPWs, um, this is something that I asked Jason, also Stephanie Jang should talk to, uh, the superintendent, but what I've been told is that there is, um, we have a list of part-time, uh, workers there, but the superintendent feels like, that he has to hire more because some of them are, you know, because it's part-time, you don't have to come sometimes.
But how many positions are we talking about? It says part-time laborers.
Right, right. So, you want to identify that. Well, well, we have to ask, we have to ask Stephanie again, but what I've been told by the superintendent is that he is thinking about two part-time. But, again, that's why I left it empty. Let's, let's wait until Stephanie comes back to us. Let's, let's wait until Stephanie comes back to us. Hopefully, she'll come back, goes through the email, give us an update. Any more questions? I ask again, any more questions, council members? All right, great, thank you very much. Let's move to the council reports.
Before you do that, we need a voice.
Oh, oh, shoot, I totally forgot. Roy, you used to come in here early, my, my, my apologies. Would you please come and tell us about the, uh, the audit for year 2023 and court direction plan?
All right, so your clerk has all the documents, they'll be ready for next Monday. I, my lord, have to appear before you since I'm not here next week. We go over the corrective action plan. The audit was actually very, very good. You're gonna see multiple comments from previous years. However, some of those comments will be off next year. This is for the 2023 audit. So, very quickly and briefly, number one has been corrected. It was resolution 2023 dash two fifty-six and two fifty-seven. I don't know why that appeared in the audit. It did, it remains. However, we have taken the corrective action on that. Number two, Gray Ray should remain to spend the appropriate grant reserves. That is being done, that's on page one oh seven of the audit. We are spending down those grants. Specifically, clean communities and recycling tonnage grants. All contracts awarded via resolution being covered at the time of the award. We did not do that last year, we are doing it now. Quotes, quotes, uh, have to be obtained for purchases that exceed fifty percent of the threshold. We have one PO that was caught. It was for the fire department during the COVID. We did not do the resolution on that. It's an audit comment. Hopefully, that doesn't happen again. Uh, POs, uh, number five, purchase swords can be utilized for all expenditures to ensure proper approvals, certification, provided payment. So, the POs have been approved by the mayor and council, there's no exception. However, the resolutions also have to be approved by the mayor and council. To see what we're doing. Uh, we're already spoken to the health and construction department to make sure that we get all their revenue in by twelve thirty-one. It's almost impossible, but we're gonna try because we still have deposit and transit as of twelve thirty-one. But we will do our best on that. Uh, we now have an outside company doing the, uh, outside appointment of police officers. I think, don't quote me on this one, this has been resolved as well.
What do you mean, I'm sorry?
So what happened was, in previous years, we were paying police officers part-time, part-time. However, we need to get the money first. So with the company at hand now, we're getting the money upfront before we pay the police officers. So we're not going to have to chase people for money.
Okay. Yes, we hired a third-party vendor to, to do overtime, correct?
Correct.
They're supposed to do it equally and fairly, correct?
And they are, from what I gather. You would have had some issues by now from the police.
Okay.
Um, certification payouts, very controversial here in Calisay Springs Park. Uh, they are approved by the borough attorney and borough council. Uh, I'll stand by again for the record. Those certification payouts were initial from the get-go. Anyone outside of the party of twenty-ten, they're entitled to this. You have a sidebar bringing it through the borough attorney. You have resolutions also, I believe, that are going to be presented as sidebar. But they...
They, they were, I believe, last...
They were approved.
They were approved, I believe.
Perfect. Those will be out in two years, meaning all three years. Um, temporary budget. So the temporary budget was over the threshold value January first, that was my error. Won't happen again, but that's the minutes.
What was, what was your error?
So the error was, when we did the temporary budget, we were over the twenty-six point two five percent. The law says you can't be over twenty-six point five, we were. So this year, I can make sure that we don't have that error again. Again, there was nothing material, uh, in this order. It's not a return to CFO, it was a clean audit. Uh, there are things that have to be corrected, and we're doing it.
Now, this audit is, is also re-examined by our, by our board, right?
So the auditor, which was Steve Wilcox in twenty twenty-three, did the actual audit. It's done, it's complete. The borough clerk has the documents I'm presenting to you. This is as back in the audit that I'm going on, which are your recommendations.
Um, did, did our current auditor review our two, twenty-three audit?
It was sent to him yesterday.
Okay, good. Would you please come back to us, just check if he feels his kosher as well?
Sure.
Okay, please, okay. So any questions? Any questions about our, our corrective action? And, and what is it, we got ten out of fourteen?
No, we, we've corrected a whole bunch of, I don't have the exact, I would say ten out of fourteen. We've, uh, examined at least four should come off next year.
Okay, next year. Now, Councilman, do you, were you, you know, do you think it's a trend or coincidence? We're gonna talk to the circle about your observation?
Uh, yeah. Um, comparing, uh, I was comparing last year corrective action as opposed to this year, and in twenty twenty-two as opposed to twenty twenty-three, a ten out of fourteen same. And also, uh, findings are very big statements. So, but we can actually, if I can have a more detail, why we have this finding because of this, then that will be really helpful.
Now, her question is kinda like, okay, last year was ten fourteen, we, we still, we fix it.
So you're gonna have the same, there's at least six of those comments the same, such as the DPW, the police buying materials before a purchaser. I can't stop it, we try. Um, in the encumbrance, when we award a contract for, uh, D and L, or whoever it may be doing the payment. Once that is approved, we have to accommodate the entire amount of the bond loads.
Okay.
We need that, we're gonna do it, and we're doing it this year.
All right, good. Let's have a management meeting with the VA, and whoever, whoever did violate that, after the purchase order with that resolution, what it will be about. I think we should sit down, Ray, and then give them our official, you know, sit down and let them know that this shouldn't happen again. Now, Councilman, why, do we have to set up a resolution anyways, please?
Or...
The kills, the kills that we, we didn't get a resolution for?
No, they're done, they were fixed this year.
Okay, good, all right, good.
Uh, one more question regarding swimming pool. Uh, it says fee changes related to swimming pool has to be approved via ordinance. And the way that we have of the current ordinance in swimming pool regarding pool, uh, regarding fee, we have editors, uh, or notes, which says that the current, you know, fee will be maintained available at the, you know, color office or somewhere, rather than the ordinance. But it says we have to approve the ordinance. Is that really necessary?
So your membership fees for the pool, I thought they were approved in March or April this year.
February.
If they were, so you won't see that, uh, comment next year. This is for twenty twenty-three.
By resolution.
Resolution ordinance. On my, on a personal level, I'd rather do it as an ordinance, borough attorney, to make sure that the reso is qualified as an ordinance. That will be done. Uh, we can actually do it, uh, November. If it was a resolution in February, let's make it an ordinance.
All right.
For swim pool fees, membership.
Right, but the thing is, I don't, Council, you confirm with me, confirm with me, but I don't know if in the ordinance, you have to put in how much, really?
That's what it says, though.
Yeah, but we don't have to. That's why I think the ordinance, we, see, I, this ordinance that I wanna talk to you about as well, I need some cleaning and updating and, and revising. But I think that's one of the things that, Council, you wanna think about. I don't know why we have to put a price in the ordinance. It's definitely done by resolution, no?
They're saying, if they're saying...
The auditor wants an ordinance when it comes to money because it becomes permanent. The resolution, as far as I was concerned, was suffice. The auditor did not agree with me?
No, I, I'm just trying to see, is this change the ordinance? We have to put the price in the ordinance?
Make the resolution an ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's what they're saying, the auditor wants.
Okay.
No on, no foul, because you had the resolution in place anyway.
The price will change. We're not gonna change the ordinance every time the price changes.
You have to.
You have to do, and that's...
Once a year, we'll do it again in March.
So I'll talk to Karen. I don't know, who, who sets the fee?
The pool commission.
Pool commission? So Karen will do that.
Karen, think about every single pool's, uh, price as well, so it's a good time to figure it out. Who was the pool committee? That will be Stephanie again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two things for Stephanie.
Uh, in fact, the ordinance, in the current, current documents about the swimming pool, there are a lot of outdated information. So I think we have to ask Stephanie to take a look at it and update it.
This is what I thought about, guys. Um, yeah, yeah, Stephanie could do that too, she has a good problem with. But one of the functions that I, uh, we have done this committee, is this is one of your functions. We get the chats, waiting in line, or singing to the doctor's office. We do our control two sixty, to see what's outdated, what has been modified with the chief of times, making sure that, hey, are we adhering to the state statutes? Because we have mistakes in the past, right? We made ordinances that are against the state statutes. So let's, if you can, do that. I, I think you will do it as well.
Mayor?
Yes.
So for the record, we want to make sure the affidavit of the audit is signed off by everyone, hopefully this evening or tomorrow or whatever, by next month end. So here, that'll be next week. The resolution that I appear before you this evening to talk about the corrective action, that we can have that passed for the next week also, next month end. Synopsis of audit, it's gonna be published, uh, sometime next week or so. Uh, your borough clerk has all those documents. Uh, once they're passed next Monday, Wednesday, we will upload to the test. We're one of the few communities left where the audit has been filed.
Okay, that's fine. Um, to help this, you need to help us. When you were just said right now, that simple corrective action that we did, and what we have left, you can send that email, this simple bullet point summary, what we've done. Give it to Ray, and give it to the council members who didn't make it. So they don't have any excuse saying, you know what, I didn't get it. Ray, so, could you send that email to Ray, CC towards me, Ray will send it to the council members who are not here.
Okay.
That's it, yes.
What I'm trying to do is, I mean, we gotta correct it, right? We gotta make sure we collect all this action, right?
Yes.
Who has to do what, right? First, we need to know exactly what needs to be done, and by, who's gonna do it, right? By when, we can do it, right? Those plans have to be there. Otherwise, of, how, you know, how can we correct all this?
What do we need?
I mean, for example, I...
Give us an example.
Yeah, for example, swimming pool. Uh, it says, uh, the ordinance has to be changed, and all the adequate record, uh, detailing data needs to be maintained, right? By the same code, right? So this is very obvious, right? Somebody, a company in for has to do it.
So this is what we're gonna do. I have to worry about this. The governance committee is about to do a job of doing this with Ray. Sit down, see what you can do to fix it. You have to sit down, I only ask Ray to sit down with, um, um, with the, uh, with the bill, uh, what is it? Fire department? That, that did the PO and spent it without giving a reservation as much. You guys, let's redo this, work with the VA, bring them over there, sit down with them, and let them know that this shouldn't happen.
Well, first thing I'm gonna do is, Roy and I will talk.
Yeah.
Roy and I talk, and then, then I will go over any individual departments or personnel. Yeah.
Well, get it done, like, let's say, within three weeks, sit down, everybody, make sure that they don't repeat their mistakes next year, Council on.
Great, good.
Okay, thank you.
So three weeks, all right?
Within three weeks, we'll sit down with everybody, with all the people, you know, concerning, you know, getting, getting, it's certainly wrong without the, uh, with the resolution. That is a no. Anything else? All right, great. Um, they have a motion to...
No vote.
Well, uh, uh, council reports?
Uh, since no one actually, uh, I mean, this is regards to the, uh, the resolution two fifty-three, since nobody, you know, mentioned or, you know, bringing up their question, I'm just gonna voluntarily share with the, uh, members here.
Yes.
Because it's part of the police matter, right?
Yes.
Uh, in that resolution, we have a multiple, uh, vehicle, actually, uh, uh, is, is going to break down vehicle, the, uh, the blown engine from the police department, right? So I know earlier this year, we have made a contract with Enterprise Fleet Corporation, right?
Yes.
Which deals with the, uh, the, the vehicle, um, including the police department, DPW, any vehicle that the board possess, right? So we contact the company, trying to trade those vehicles in. The value is not there. Uh, we're gonna spend more money on the fee to trade that in, right? So minus, we'll, we'll take the, you know, all the route, uh, going through the auction, part it out, um, sell it through there, right? So when, you know, police department is actively seeking new vehicle through the program, right? When the time is come, uh, we might have to, uh, I just need, you know, you know, council support to, uh, make that decision, but we're actively searching vehicle, but it's not there because of the, uh, you know, uh, the equipment of the vehicle that, 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 uh, requires uh, simply the lights and stuff, right? If we're looking, if we're searching the vehicle from West Coast, the color, the flashing of the vehicle, right? Am I, am I saying it correctly? Yeah, it's different from what we use here in the East Coast. For example, blue, red, white, some of the, some of the, uh, state using a different color of the, of the, the side of the vehicle, right? So, uh, we're, we're actually having a hard time to find the vehicle, right? So, but, you know, police department is, you know, actively looking for it. So, and the time comes, uh, I'll bring, I'll bring these other vehicles, right, with council support to make that happen, so.
Thank you. Would I ask one more?
Robert, then, uh, yeah, so when do you think that's gonna be?
Uh, so before this problem, uh, occurs, right? The first vehicle for traffic was around, uh, earlier next year. But I told, uh, director and the police department, we just had a meeting, a committee meeting, and I told them to actually, uh, go out in a different state to look for it, not just the local, um, you know, uh, boundary, right? So, uh, which they're gonna do. So we'll see what the date is going to be, so.
Thank you, Council, Councilman. Councilman you?
Yeah, Robert and DePoy, I have a question about IT service from, from the county. Is it something that we can add in at the regular meeting? Because we've been working on the outside.
Yeah, but can, can Council on you, this is a council report. So when we hear a council report afterward, I'll do it up through you. Which makes it a council report.
Uh, for the library, we had a library board meeting, uh, come, uh, last week. And basically, the current, we have a three librarians, their contract will, uh, will be renewed. So that's all.
Great, who's taking care of the contract?
Uh...
Who's reviewing the contract, making sure that...
I know you.
The lawyer?
I remember you.
I believe the contract should be fair and equitable. Adequate, everybody should have a same amount of increase, uh, unless, unless law allows it to happen.
It's not quite exactly same, but it's pretty similar.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Great, uh, Council, Jason Kim, do you have anything to report?
Not this time.
Thank you. Council Sandy Lee, do you have anything to report?
I don't have any report this time.
Ah, you're still there, you're too far for me, but thank you for handling. Great, uh, VA, you have anything to say?
Uh, just that the, uh, gas cards that the police and DPW use, instead of being handled directly from another company through us, is gonna be handled by Fleet Enterprise, who is handling all the purchases and acquisitions of our police cars. We're gonna be using them. I think things will run much more smoothly with that, with that decision going. And as you can hear from the noise, the egress project, what we call the egress project, is in full swimming. And, uh, we're making good progress on that now.
Thank you, thank you. It's time that the board will comply with our own ordinances and our regular regulations. It's been riding for too long. All right, um, any, any, uh, report, Councilor?
No.
Okay, um, I wanna tell you in my report that... Okay, um, I wanna tell you in my report that, first, I wanna talk to, uh, like, uh, council one you, concerning the governance committee was talking about. I would like to ask the attorney to review certain things here concerning the ordinances, uh, for housekeeping, updates, and, you know, I'll, I'll ask about the questions. Um, updates that I wanna, you know, amendments of the, of the ordinance that I wanna ask the, uh, councillor to review, and hopefully prepare for next year, if you can, uh, next, next Monday meeting is. An ordinance amendment through which the recent, recent issue with advertisement posted on YouTube posts, we discovered that the ordinance did not designate the fines schedule. Matter of fact, the notice that, that the whole Article five miscellaneous, which includes two five eight two dash twenty-six to two five eight dash forty-two, has no schedule of fines. So I, I, could you please take a look at that and see if it lists a schedule of fines for all those violations?
Yep.
Uh, the other thing is the, uh, chapter amendment, ordinance amendment, chapter sixty-two dash two, D P W employees. The prior employee was Austin Ashley, many improper orders set for the D P director, uh, uh, rose responsibility. We need to amend the ordinance to adhere to the state statute, especially the five-year term limit. I think that's ridiculous. The, the director has a longer term limit than me. So we have to really figure this out. Will be applicable. Please check other director levels above town and see if you're comparable, and, uh, make sure that, make sure that there is, um, you know, uh, the conditions for the, uh, for the police director is correct and according to the state statute. For example, I don't believe that the tenure, uh, was, 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 was proper for the director. Um, also, and also, uh, uh, that the, that the public work plans, your position in the borough, it's just five years, it's just too long, I wanna, I wanna revamp this, and also, um, to hire the best candidate, also, there's a condition where the, uh, the director have to be working in Palace East Park Borough for five years to be applicable, to, to become a director. That means we're restricted, like, like previously before. I think we changed the ordinance on that.
Residency, get rid of the residency.
Yeah, just get rid of the residency, you know, live, the, working for the borough for five years.
Okay.
That means we can only carry in-house. That, I think that's unfair. The other thing is, uh, we need to verify and potentially amend the ordinance, chapter fifty-eight dash four point four. Police committee has appropriate authority. There's, it's a little bit of confusion. I wish you could clear it out. Um, I, I wish there was a, if you could remove the ordinance, this ordinance, because this is very confusing. I think it's not updated. And another update is ordinance chapter fifty-eight dash four point seven, police department, employment of officers. We should identify the supposed state statutes as, you know, the numbers. You know, we, we can't, I don't want to just state statutes, but look at that. There's a lot of ordinance that's cut off index, state statute numbers. That, that is important. It's hard for me to report, and so is the public who wants to know about it all. Um, and one more, like, like what Chrissy Wong said about the fee schedules for the pool ordinance, and, um, and, uh, you know, we, we should figure that out. And I have some questions about the ordinances. Um, is, uh, well, these are updates. Then, I, I would like chapter, chapter eighty-four dash seven, which, which is the hours and days of alcoholic sale, is not updated with three sixty. Uh, this was a very monumental thing that we did to curb public intoxication, and this should be updated in the three sixty as well. Also, it hired, it, we should, it hired the chapter fifty-three dash three parking committee, was not appointed for the yearly appointments. I've never heard of a parking committee. Uh, I, I've been mayor for two years. I've been a council member for a few more years. Uh, but I never recall the mayor doing mayor appointments, uh, you know, yearly appointments for the parking committee. I think this is a very important committee. And like I said, the reason why we want to revamp and update our ordinance, because we ourselves have to follow our own ordinance. We don't even know our own ordinance. So it is our fault. We can't believe all the people are not following our ordinance. If we don't enforce it and hire and under set our ordinance, we need a parking duty. And I was hoping we, it's a very well scheduled, where it's a few classes, and they're there to make sure that the public, the town prepares for the future to have, you know, parking spaces. This was, this was, this was dismissed. It was excluded from the mayor's appointment in the yearly appointment. And I feel this is not, again, we're not hiring to the, uh, the ordinance that we have. The other thing is the, um, now, the questions, the questions I have is, this is, uh, concerning chapter fifty-six dash six payroll. Uh, we, we have to designate, uh, an approval, uh, approval officer. Do you know, does anybody know who it is? Is it, is it, let's see, are you the approval officer?
Why?
For chapter fifty-eight dash four, I'm sorry, chapter fifty-five dash six payroll. We, by ordinance, we have to designate an approval officer.
I've never heard of that.
What's in the ordinance?
Okay.
Yes, please.
Never heard of it.
Never heard of that.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance, so. And I've never heard of approval officer. In the mayor's, in the yearly appointments as well. Now, now, the other question that I have is, uh, chapter sixty-two dash one, D P W, uh, the court enforcement, court enforcer was transferred to the management of the P D about a few years ago, one or two years ago. Do you guys remember that? He used to be part of E P W? I think we created a resolution. Please verify, councillor, if it was passed by a resolution on ordinance. But we do have to properly go through the ordinance to transfer court enforcer officer to a different department. Um, the problem is, I don't, I'm not really sure where the court enforcer should be, because he does a hybrid work for the billing department, uh, and, 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 you know, private, private properties, and also for the, for the police. So we need to find out if, 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 if the transfer of the, of, of, of the management of the court enforcer to the police station was done properly. And secondly, we have to find out where he belongs and which department is he under.
Right now, who is the court enforcer?
Right now, it's John Groll.
And he belongs to where?
Right, he used to belong to D P W, but he got transferred to the police station. So traffic is traffic, right? We have T E Os, we, we have police officers who give out traffic.
Well, if you recall, mayor, uh, T E O's, the traffic department was also D P W. In fact, that now, somehow, it got transferred over to a police department last year, so.
So we do have to figure out where the T E Os, but T E O is actually traffic enforcement. Right? So it has to be in the police department.
It should be.
But we gotta find out if that transfer was also through an ordinance, or if we did, before resolution, we'll, 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 we'll just make it happen, right? Good. The other question I want to ask is, um, is, what does the state statute and borough want to say about hiring police advocates with a criminal record? I would like to find out, councillor, what are, what are procedure in the state statute? And also in our own, uh, management, the police department probably comes with policy. Um, I'm not sure if, if, what position on, on the levels, um, say yes or no. I would like to find that out. And other thing is, could you please verify chapter fifty-eight dash four point eight, police department, special law enforcement officers? In the ordinance, it states that, that the, the special law enforcement, the special that we're trying to hire, right? Right now, the, in the resolution, right, was the ordinance. There's a resolution. It says, appoint, appointed from time to time, special law enforcement. So I'm trying to see, are we abusing hiring special officers? Because it says point, time to time. I would like for you to define what time to, time, time to time means in the legal sense, because we are active in hiring special police because we need them. Um, the special officers by ordinance are no more than one year term. So councillor, I was hoping you could find out if, if that means it's gonna be an yearly appointment of the mayor with the consent of the, with the consent of the councillors. Great. Another question is to verify, um, concerning the ordinance or state statute that requires how many local newspapers ad that we have to use for our public meetings, which, you know, which is the work session, uh, which we call a regular session. We have the zoning board in the playbook, correct? All those gotta be advertised, but us, we always advertise two newspapers. If my understanding is correct, I believe the O P M A, O P S, states that only one local newspaper is required. Please verify if that is true. If it is, I would like to sure save some money because we don't have to send two. Last but not least, is the general, uh, also, I, this, this relates to the, just background checking. Uh, councillor, I would like for you to find out what our protocol is for hiring new employees concerning drug screening with background checks. I know we do background checks, but I wanna know if we provide, we feel it's mandatory for employee candidates to come to do a blood test before we, you know, before he qualifies to be given higher.
I will.
Thank you. That's about it. Good. Um, may I have a mo-, uh, can I ask everybody? The, the chief is not here. Director is actually, um, in a sick leave. Hopefully, he'll get well quick. Um, there's no police, there's no, there's no, uh, O I C here. So I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to close our, our meeting and, and give to, no, we don't, we don't do that, I'm sorry. Do we give to the public participation?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and make a motion to open to the public.
My motion.
First, John, may I have a second? Chrissy?
Can I have a question?
Sure, sure, ask.
I've been trying to ask about this I T service. What's gonna be status? Can we, can we put it, you know, at the regular meeting?
Good question.
If, if we make sufficient progress, then we can put it on the agenda.
So what do we have to do concerning B C I T?
Our contracts we buy.
Yes, we, we had a good talk. He's very, uh, pliable, very flexible. I think ninety-nine, ninety-five percent of the, uh, such matters that I was concerned is rectifiable. I wrote it down in, 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 uh, in a note. I have to transfer that leisure leave so the councillor can understand what the new conditions are, and that was agreed by both parties. You'll have to implement that into the contract, and then he'll double check if the legal, uh, concerning the legal, uh, protection is in place, right? And, and then we're not doing any legal process. And hopefully, I'll get it, I'm gonna get it done this week. So I want to present it next week, okay? And there's one more, there's one more. Uh, the other one is the, yes, the library. We are meeting with the library.
Right.
Yeah, so we have, we have decided to do shared service. They're gonna rely on us to manage the, the, uh, uh, the, uh, hub out. Not manage, but initiate and broad, broadside, manage the reconstruction, the redevelopment, uh, the, 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 uh, renovations of the library board. That, I have all the documentation. I'll also digest that all this week. And then hopefully, I'll talk to, uh, the library and also our councillors. I want to talk to the two, a councillor of the library, and we have a councillor here, and I'll make a recommendation to have a bid, bid packet ready, because we probably have to do a bid packet.
What, uh, when do you think government wants?
Well, the bid packet first has to understand, we have to have another meeting. The whole first meeting was about discovery. So we found out exactly what they need, all the documentation. I have that. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Sophia Jang to, to, to copy that, and I want the, uh, the library committee to have the same documents. And then we'll review that over, and then we're gonna have to meet with them again just to finalize. Once everything set is stone, then to move forward to do whatever, we do a bid or create a bid for them and whatnot. All the cost that, that is, that, that, that is there to facilitate this, uh, this project will be paid by the library, not the borough. The borough would not make a single dime for this, uh, shared service agreement.
Like, right. With us to the, uh, the Bergen County I T service, right? Are we putting all the department server into one single transfer, or?
Well, whether it is one, I, uh, one single server or not, is actually, they have to decide, uh, according to my understanding.
Well, I, I haven't understanding that the whole reason why we're doing this, one of the reasons is to unify all the servers. We have too many servers all left and right.
Well, police department, we can help. I mean, it's just.
Police and the plant, and the building department, and the fire department.
Fire department, I think that is included, right?
No, the, the court department, police department, uh, is part of the, uh, the law. They have to have their own server. Transferring to a Bergen County I T service, any, any departments that are now required to be have a, you know, separate server, we're gonna put everybody into a one transfer and give it to the Bergen County.
That's one thing I didn't ask, actually. I have to ask, uh, representative, if that's all possible.
Are you talking about we're gonna use a single server, uh, and we're all gonna use it? Is that your question?
Yes.
Or another question is that are we gonna move everything all together at the same time?
Same thing. Same thing. What, is that different?
But anyway, single server, that we, we need.
No, not what we have. We're talking about.
I know, they, new.
V C I T. We gotta, we gotta implement and merge all the servers except for the, like you said, the court and the police department, correct?
Exactly, right. Except the police.
And the courts. So we would like to implement that because their server's gonna get sold, we're gonna have to spend a lot of money again. That was no purpose to do. And there's more servers gonna go down sooner or later.
There's no point leaving, you know, other department, uh, using their own server. I mean, there's, what's the point of, you know, going with Bergen County I T service then?
Or include the building?
Yes.
Yes. They should be capable. That's the whole, oh, marketing pitch, that they accept probably majority of all softwares that we use in the borough. So, you can, could you verify that for me? While I work on, uh, while I work on that with, with the borough.
Okay. Uh, one more thing regarding the I T service. I wonder, we haven't added internet service, but we have enough problem, the borough has a problem, internet service on and off last year. I think probably it's better to add the internet service.
To where? To, to the?
To the I T service.
V C I T?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, uh, in that last meeting when I was there.
Yeah, 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 that was better.
They were actually talking about the, the cable, the, the fiber line, whatever. It's already out there. Just putting it in is not gonna cost any, uh, not much.
We're not gonna have any internet service.
No, no, they try, they will try to get.
Yes, yes. You don't want it.
And then, right, and then the speed of the, the service, right? It will be more, uh, than what we have beginning, right?
And also you don't have a failover, so even if what is done.
It's packed up, it's packed up. It's okay. So don't forget what we said. We, we, we're gonna make sure, Chris, Chrissy Wong, you, you're gonna, councillor, you're gonna make sure that, that part, that the internet service, and also if we could all unify our departments into one server there.
Okay.
We have these, as five officers already said, we see those, uh, holes in the walls. Okay, more questions before I go to the public?
So I'll second.
I don't second.
No, I'll second for public, open public.
Oh, thank you. Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. The first is John, and second is Wong Yuen. To the public, you guys have three minutes. Please come up. Please talk about just our resolutions, subject to the head. I request again, public to come up and talk about their questions about our agenda today. If there isn't, I would like to make a motion to close the public session and, and come back to our, our workshop, work, work session. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second? Thank you, second. First from Wong Yuen, second from John Min. All in favor? Aye. Uh, may I have a motion to close this meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, may I have a second? All in favor? Thank you very much.